Go ahead and get started. I want to ask that you all stand with us for an opening prayer, which I have invited to be with us, Rabbi Peter Hyman, my good friend, to be with us on this time. I figure he has a better relation with God than I do, so therefore.
You keep. Thank you. I'm honored and pleased to be here. I want a moment of prayer.
A moment of prayer. Heal us, oh Lord, and we shall be healed. Save us, oh Lord, and we shall be saved. This plea from the prophet Jeremiah is as prescient and penetrating a request now as when these words were first uttered. As we stand and face the realities of this pandemic, we ask, oh God, for your divine protection. Send a measure of your knowledge, your wisdom, and your understanding to those working tirelessly on our behalf, as they seek to uncover the mysteries of your creation, and by so doing, help contain this modern plague. Guide, bless, and protect our lawmakers and officials as they carry out the sacred responsibilities entrusted to them by the people of our great county. Keep them safe and secure. May those who stand here in righteous debate be ever mindful that your divine image is reflected in the eyes of those they face, remembering that it is in your likeness we are all created. Bless, oh God, the work of those who labor here. May the work they do be a blessing to us and to all they serve, and let us say.
Amen.
Amen. Do you want us to pledge allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Rabbi, thank you very much for being with us. We certainly appreciate your words of prayer and comfort during these times. Counsel has an agenda before us. The chair would ask for any additions, deletions, or corrections to that agenda. Here and on, the chair moves that this be accepted with unanimous consent. Counsel also have minutes from our September 22 meeting. Had a chance to review them. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? The chair would move that they also be accepted with unanimous consent. We have disbursements from November 3, November 10. Had a chance to review them. Speak with our fiscal officer, Ms. Lane. She would ask if there are any additions, deletions, or corrections to those disbursements. Here and on, the chair moves they be accepted with unanimous consent. Thank you, counsel. Next, on your agenda, we do have a proclamation for National Hospice and Palliative Care Month for the month of November. And Madam Secretary, who do we have? Do we have anyone here from that industry?
We have several people in the hall.
You want to go ahead and wave them in?
And Mr. Pack, while they're coming up, I would just like to announce to the community that Mrs. Price wanted to be here tonight, but she had a family emergency, so she was not able to attend.
Okay, thank you. Why don't you all come up and take a seat, please? And sir, if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself and your guest, we appreciate it.
Yes, good evening. My name is Chris Chakors, and I serve as the executive director for Talbot Hospice. And I'm joined by several of my colleagues, Molly Kirsch, who's our clinical director. And we also have Dr. Rob Sanchez, who's our medical director, and Mia Cranford, who leads our marketing and development efforts at hospice.
Welcome, all of you. We were just saying that this is a proclamation counsel is about to hopefully approve, but before we do that, for Palliative, Hospice and Palliative Care Month, the month of November, I'd like to give you an opportunity just to share with the audience here and at home, you know, what this month is all about. We've done this before in the past. I think it's very vitally important that we continue the effort to address hospice and palliative care here in Talbot County. So I'll just pass it over to you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity for being here tonight and certainly for your support. I'll be brief with my comments, and then I'm going to share the microphone in some time with my colleague Molly, who also shares some comments. But on behalf of the entire Talbot Hospice team, we thank you for this recognition. More importantly, as I already mentioned, thank you to the council and to the community for your unwavering support. 2020 has been an unprecedented year, to say the least, for all of us. Each one of us has been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. It has created many unique challenges in both our professional and personal lives. From the beginning of this pandemic, our focus has remained on serving our community, our patients, their families, and loved ones in a compassionate and a safe manner. As you all know, the services we provide go well beyond caring for the patient in their final months, weeks, and days. Our palliative care service provides care for patients with chronic, life-limiting illnesses, many of whom continue curative treatments as well. We work with the patient and their family to address the way these conditions affect mind, body, and spirit. Our interdisciplinary team of doctors, nurses, aides, social workers, chaplains, and grief specialists embrace the patient and their loved ones throughout their life-limiting condition or end-of-life journey and beyond. One such service is grief support. Grief is much more complex now in a world of COVID. It is even more challenging with underlying conditions such as depression, anxiety, or substance use disorder. And I'd like to invite my colleague Molly Kirsch to talk a little bit more about our bereavement and grief services and the support that we provide to the community, as well as the collaboration that we have with other organizations in our community.
Thank you. Thank you again for having us here tonight. As we move through this 2020 and recognize that our grief support can be something that the community can look to for help in these times, we have a group that we've put together called Shattering the Silence. That is, a group that meets on the second Tuesday of every month. As we see the need for more support, the group is considering moving the group to a weekly group. This group is to support families who have suffered loss due to suicide or substance abuse death, is an unfortunate sign of some of what people are struggling with now. We also partner with the schools when there is an unexpected death in family or students, especially in this time of isolation, where we can provide extra support in the atmosphere that the student is most comfortable in. So we're trying to make sure the community is aware of our services outside of just hospice, and that we can be a beacon of light in some of this dark time for what some of these families are dealing with.
Thank you. Anything more? Anything from any members of counsel before I have secretary read the proclamation?
Mr. Pack?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Pack, I just want to say that we are so fortunate to have Talbot Hospice in this community, which is just so highly regarded, as you've said, but not only for the expanded and beautiful facility you offer to the community, but for all these services that you offer that go far beyond those walls. And thank you for all you do. You really have an enormous impact in this community, and we're better for it.
Absolutely. Madam Secretary, would you mind reading the proclamation, please?
Proclamation, National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, November 2020. Whereas for more than 40 years, hospice has helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people, allowing them to spend their final months at home surrounded by their loved ones, and as Medicare's first proven coordinated care model, hospice is a program that works, offering person-centered compassionate care, ensuring people dignity, choice, and quality of life. And whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. And whereas, beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. And whereas palliative care delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain can be provided at any time during an illness, and hospices are some of the best providers of community-based palliative care. And whereas, a growing body of peer-reviewed research indicates that timely access to Talbot Hospice and palliative care can decrease hospitalizations and emergency room visits and increase quality of life for patients and their family caregivers. And whereas, every year, more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. And whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care planning that help individuals make decisions about the care they want. And whereas, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patient choice and access to individualized services based on a patient's unique care needs and wishes. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim November 2020 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month in Talbot County, encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 10th day of November in the year of our Lord, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Chair would entertain the motion, and the proclamation is read. Moved by Ms. Callahan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Devilio. Any further discussion, comment? I would just echo my words of my colleague, Mr. Lesher. Thanks for all the work that Talbot Hospice has done over the years in providing excellent care to families and to your patients as well, during the most sensitive time in their lives. Thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you.
With that being said, don't leave. With that being said, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Pat?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
And if you wouldn't mind doing me down front, Dr. Sanchez, you can also.
You can get the middle. What do you want to do? I'll hand Molly, I'll hand that to you, Dr. Sanchez. Okay, make sure you give me a big smile. That is beautiful. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sanchez. Thank you. Thank you. Next, on your agenda, we're going to get an update from the Department of Economic Development and Tourism. We have with us Ms. Cassandra Van Hooser, who's our director of that department, and she's making her way forward at this time. Cassandra, floor is yours.
Good evening. I think I have to push the button. So, good evening, everyone. I wanted to give you a brief update on our grant programs that my office is administering, and I have several to talk about. But I wanted to refer back to the rabbi's comments about a sacred duty, and I want to say thank you for entrusting our small department with the duty of dispersing these grants into the community, because kudos to you all for allowing us to have the money to reinvest into our business community. As you know, our businesses have been hurt by COVID-19, and I think that we've been able to help a significant number of them. So first, I'll give you the update on the Talbot Cares Small Business Grant. We have 116 applications that have been approved as of today. We have dispersed $1,999,232 back into the community, and those have been approved and paid as of today. That gives us about $100,000 and change left to finish out round three. We are well into round three. We have 10 applications that are currently being reviewed. That will take up most of the money that we have been allocated, which was $1.2 million. This money has gone into every corner of the county, as I have said before. Cordova, Easton, Oxford, Royal Oak, Sherwood, St. Michael's, Tillman Island, and Trap, the bulk of them being in Easton, 79 businesses in Easton, and 22 in St. Michael's. And interesting to note, the top three business categories that we funded were restaurants, retail, and beauty shops. And if you have been following COVID-19, and I know you all have, those are the industries that have been hurt the most, hospitality and tourism, and personal services. And you can see that reflected in the numbers that we have here. I would be remiss if I did not give a huge thank you to the Grants Committee that we appointed to oversee this. Jackie Wilson, who is the chair of the Economic Development Commission, Rich Lethler, Small Business Development Center, Sandy Pepe, Jean Weisman, Ron Engel, and Walter Chase from our towns, Andy, Jessica, Clay, and Geneva, of course, and Cory has been a great help as well. And having a team to bounce ideas off of and to oversee this, every file has been reviewed twice by a different reviewer, and so I can say with authority that we have done our absolute best to get this money back into the community. I think we've only had 11 that we weren't able to eventually get qualified. So I am, again, very proud of the work we've done. And again, one more huge kudos to the Finance Office. Danizza has been a real trooper and has reviewed every file, and Angela Lane as well. So the team in Finance has been great. And of course, my team, Candace Harris and Mary Lou Russ, have just been extraordinary. And so I don't want to be up here taking all the glory, because it has really and truly taken a team to get this money out into the community. And we have a new grant opportunity that we will be launching this week. We got $531,350 from the Governor's Restaurant Relief Fund, and we will be dispersing that back into our restaurant community. We have about 119 restaurants by the count of the Restaurant Association of Maryland. I'm working with Ann Morris and her team in environmental health to make sure that we have all of the licensed restaurants. And we have already set out our guidelines, and we'll be releasing these later this week. We've set up the application process on DocuSign, and so the criteria for this is not quite as strict as it is for the CARES money, because there is no income qualifier. So for the CARES grant, you have to have sustained a loss of revenue of 25%, but there is no qualification like that on the restaurant grant. So we will take applications until the end of this month. Then we will take the amount of money we have, divide it by the number of applicants, and that's how much money we'll be able to put back into those restaurants. So we're really excited. We know most of the restaurateurs in this community, and Ann Morris and her team are helping us identify the ones that we don't have emails for. There's only a handful, so we will reach out directly to the restaurants and then hopefully have this money out quickly, because, as you know, the governor just restricted additionally the number of occupants a restaurant can have, and so I know that our restaurants are going to be in need this time of year. So, you know, our goal, of course, is to have as many businesses survive as possible when we get on the other side of COVID, and of course, we're trying to do our part. There's one other grant that I wanted to just make you aware of. You probably heard in the governor's address last week that, I guess it was last week, his last address besides the one today, that there was $2 million in a fund for DMOs, destination marketing organizations. Talbot County Economic Development and Tourism is the official destination marketing organization for Talbot County, and we will receive a grant of about $62,000, and that is for marketing only. I have a marketing plan laid out, and we'll be talking to the tourism board about it in the morning when we have our meeting. So I have chosen to largely put this into, there's the plan, largely put this into digital marketing, being where people are when they're looking for you, I think, is our best strategy at this time, and I have it laid out through June. And we can spend these funds through June of this year. They have to be, these funds have to be distributed by December. Unlike our other grants, we will get this money in-house and then account for it after we've spent it. So that is the DMO grant and our part of that. So again, we're doing all that we can to help the business community and to sustain as many businesses as possible until COVID is done. Questions?
Not a question, but just to say I will join you in saluting your Grants team for working to get those funds back out into the community, $1.2 million, and they're still need, you know. So I was glad to hear last week when the governor announced this restaurant grant that we're receiving, and that we can continue helping those restaurants through the remainder of this year. How many will be able to keep their doors open once we turn the corner? We do not know. We just got word from Secretary Frankly regarding extending those funds into 2021, which to say we could not do. Now, your funds, you only have $100,000 left, so I'm sure you'll have no problem, as you said before, fulfilling those 10 applications that you have outstanding. But on the other side, with the individual CARES grant, we have not been spending as quickly as I thought we would be. So we're certainly going to be looking to see how we can get those funds out into the community, seeing that we cannot carry them over into 2021. But again, Cassandra, thank you very much for all you're doing on top of these grants funds, but also just trying to keep, you know, the economic and development spirit alive and well here in Talbot County, which is kind of tough right now, seeing that travel's very limited as far as people moving about. So thank you so much. Anyone else for counsel with any comments?
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time this evening.
Okay. We have about, oh, it looks like that clock's not right, but we have about five minutes before public hearing, so we got to that relatively quickly. Why don't we jump into county manager and just pull a couple of things off there, Mr. Hollis, if you could?
John Horn.
Yeah, John was out. Can someone grab John Horn out there in the hallway, please?
Cassandra, could you see if John Horn is out there?
I think he and Hugh are out there.
While we're waiting for John, maybe Clay can go through three items for emergency services.
Okay.
Mr. Counsel President, I have a couple of things on the county manager report this evening for the Department of Emergency Services. The first item is requesting council approval to renew a contract with Crowder Golf for emergency debris removal in the event of a disaster in our area. This is a renewal, and if all the other counties in Maryland have these contracts, this is, again, a no-cost contract, and we're requesting that we can renew it for another year.
Any comments, question of the renewal request? Chair would entertain the motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lesher. Seconded by Mr. Callahan. Any further comments or questions? Here and on, Madam Secretary, on the renewal, please call the role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Counsel President, requesting council approval to procure an outfit county ambulances with ultraviolet lighting package, which has been proven effective as a disinfectant for air, water, and surfaces. If approved, the UV lighting package would be procured from Fesco Emergency Sales, who are the provider of our ambulance units, at a cost of $53,586. This would be a sole source purchase with them, Fesco, using CARES grant dollars.
Any comments, questions on UV lighting of the equipment? Here and on, chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lesher. Seconded by Mr. Callahan. Any further comments or questions? Madam Secretary, please call your role on the UV lighting procurement.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. Counsel President, requesting council approval to procure an outfit county ambulances with ultraviolet lighting package, which has been proven effective as a disinfectant for air, water, and surfaces. If approved, the UV lighting package would be procured from Fesco Emergency Sales, who are the provider of our ambulance units, at a cost of $53,586. This would be a sole source purchase with them, Fesco, using CARES grant dollars.
Any comments, questions on UV lighting of the equipment? Here and on, chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Lesher. Seconded by Mr. Callahan. Any further comments or questions? Madam Secretary, please call your role on the UV lighting procurement.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Mr. President, Mr. Horn. I think you better have.
Don't take that standing here.
He's really mad, he's doing something cool.
Thank you, Mr. Hollis.
Well, gentlemen, always good to see you all and our friends from Eastern Utility, John, Hugh, good to see you both. And the floor is yours.
So, John, before you start, let me just let the counsel know specifically what your asking is, and if you can explain for a minute or two. So Eastern Utilities is requesting use of the remaining.
Good God. Eastern Utilities was requesting use of the remaining matching funds, which is approximately $920,000 of the $3 million originally allocated, for extension of broadband in the county toward a government funding program to serve the remaining areas of the county without access to broadband.
Thank you, Mr. Pack and counsel. I will be brief and just supplement the comments of Mr. Hollis. You may recall in 2019, April 2019, we entered into a matching funds agreement with the county, and our focus at that time was the United States Department of Agriculture reconnect funding, and we applied in round one. We were not successful in round one, and we subsequently reapplied in round two, but in round two, we excluded several areas of the county in order to enhance our application and the possibility of being awarded the grant funding. Fortunately, we were awarded the grant funding in round two. And at that time, you'll probably recall us saying that the areas that were removed from round one, we would work vigorously to seek out other funding so that we might be able to include them in the overall project. We're pursuing three sources of government funding at this time, and as Mr. Hollis said, what we'd like to do is not request more funding, but we would like to be able to allocate the funds remaining from round one, excuse me, the round two of the reconnect USDA funding against these other projects. They're all three up in the air. We have some, we're fairly optimistic about at least one of them, but what we'd like to be able to do is to amend our agreement in a manner that suits Mr. Cooper Smith and ourselves, of course, that would allow us to use the balance of those funds in the same manner that was originally proposed and approved.
Any questions or counsel? And again, these are funds we've already approved. These are not new dollars. We did ask Eastern Utility to go out and find other places that we could spend this money as far as connecting here in the county, and they're done, and they're coming back to us and saying, hey, we have some areas we want to connect and use the money. So unless I'm missing something, this is a good thing, right?
No, I agree, Mr. Pack. And I applaud the efforts to make sure that we can get this broadband stretched just as far as we possibly can with available opportunities.
We're very fortunate to have Eastern Utilities as a partner in this community, and I greatly appreciate how quickly you reached out to me ahead of time to let me know about this opportunity and fill me in with the details. And yes, I kept thinking to myself, am I missing something? This just seems too right, and it's because of the work that you've done to make it this way. So thank you very much.
Mr. Cooper Smith, anything from the office of law on this?
Nothing further, other than if the council does wish to move ahead with this, I'm happy to continue discussing it with Hugh and John and Sharon Van Enberg, who I believe represents Eastern Utilities.
Well, we need to rewrite the original agreement or just for the $900,000?
I believe that there's a possibility of doing some kind of an amendment to the agreement. We just, we would need to look at it and figure out what would make the most sense.
Yeah, was that the most quickest way to do it? I agree. Yes.
Mr. Pack, ordinarily, we would have had a draft document for you to review. We are in the midst of pursuing these grants, and what we're seeking this evening is the council's affirmation that they remain a partner to the extent of the original funding. So I apologize for not having a draft document for you to actually review. As Mr. Cooper Smith said, we may be able to do an addendum, an amendment, but I think it's pretty straightforward. We did a quick red line in the office, but not in time to get it to you folks. So again, we're looking for the council's affirmation that they remain a partner to the extent that we originally agreed.
And I believe that, I'm hearing that we are, and we'll leave it up to Mr. Cooper Smith and you all to work out the legalese and the wherefores and the thou's and those kind of things, and so. Anything further from you, Mr. Hollis, or if not, I'm going to call?
I have a beginning for the House of Representatives.
Okay. With that being said, nothing from you, Ms. Lane? Back there, our fiscal officer walked in, just to make sure we covered all the bases. I agree. Yes.
Mr. Pack, ordinarily, we would have had a draft document for you to review. We are in the midst of pursuing these grants, and what we're seeking this evening is the council's affirmation that they remain a partner to the extent of the original funding. So, I apologize for not having a draft document for you to actually review. As Mr. Cooper Smith said, we may be able to do an addendum, an amendment, but I think it's pretty straightforward. We did a quick red line in the office, but not in time to get it to you folks. So, again, we're looking for the council's affirmation that they remain a partner to the extent that we originally agreed.
And I believe that, I'm hearing that we are, and we'll leave it up to Mr. Cooper Smith, and you ought to work out the legalese and the wherefores and the downs and those kind of things. And so, anything further from you, Mr. Hollis? Or if not, I'm going to call.
I have a beginning for a public.
Okay. With that being said, nothing from you, Ms. Lane? Back there, our fiscal officer walked in, just to make sure we covered all the bases. She's shaking her head no for the camera. Okay, good. Okay. This is to allow Eastern Utilities to use the balance of the $3 million that this council agreed with matching funds. The amount that I'm looking at is $902,000. Those funds will be used to look for additional connections here in Taubia County through Eastern Utility. These are not new dollars. I said it again to the community, these are not new dollars. So, with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Pack, is that $920,000?
I'm just looking at a two. Maybe my glasses, I'm looking at 902. Is that right?
It's 902. Yes, correct. Okay. Second.
Moved by Mr. Callahan, seconded by Mr. Lesher. Any further discussion or question? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, with a matter of the $902,000 to Eastern Utility for reconnection here in Taubia County, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Continue the great work here in Taubia County.
Thank you, Mr. Pack and council. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. See you, John.
Mr. President, I'm going to come back if we have our items to wind up the hearing in public.
Yeah, we do have a public hearing, don't we? Okay. So, why don't we swing back to our agenda, council? And you do have several matters for public hearing this evening. It is 6:32 by my clock. And let me get to the right page here in one moment. Okay. The first matter for public hearing before council is Resolutions 296. Madam Secretary, would you please read the title of that resolution?
Resolution 296, a resolution to formally abandon and authorize conveyance of a certain portion of Cates Point Road in Trap, Maryland. Said portion of roadway consisting of 0.4 miles, more or less, located astride two parcels of land held in common ownership with addresses at 31373 Cates Point Road and 31450 Cates Point Road, Trap, Maryland 21673. Further described as tax map 60, parcels 10 and 12 collectively the property, to establish certain conditions precedent to such abandonment and conveyance, including a survey of the area to be abandoned and revision plat at the owner's expense, and to authorize conveyance of the county's interest in such abandoned portion of the roadway by quick claim deed for no monetary consideration to the underlying fee simple owner of the property.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Mr. Clark, I believe the Public Works Advisory Board took this matter up?
Yes, sir. Okay.
I think Ed Schlichter will probably want it, but we can go ahead and tie it up. Yes, Mr. Pack, on November 4th, the Public Works Advisory Board met and reviewed Resolution 296. Ultimately, during the meeting, there were some discussions related to 296, and one of the points, I guess Mr. Schlichter, a member of our board, indicated that he owned the island that was off the water there from Case Point Road. But we had discussions on that. The board basically presented a motion recommending that the county council not adopt Resolution 296, and that motion was passed four to zero with Mr. Schlichter abstaining.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I think there's some pictures I think Ed wanted to show you.
Okay. Mrs. Schlichter, from the Public Works Advisory Board, council will hear from you as a representative of that board. You want to come up and present before we go to the public hearing?
My name is Ed Schlichter, on Jamaica Point Road in the Cates Point area, on the Public Works Advisory Board, and my call is good.
Ed, can you have, yeah, the mic, and you need to push, yeah, you're going to have to push while you're speaking. I'm sorry, we push and play.
Yes, push it and hold it down.
Yeah, push and hold it down, Ed. Yeah, there you go.
Like this?
Yeah, you got to hold that button, your thumb is on? Yeah, you got to hold it continuously, unfortunately, yes.
Well, if you would allow me, I have pictures, exhibits of that area down at Jamaica Point, which I'd like to hand out to the.
We have, if you want to.
That's the first page of it.
Yeah, work through that slide, and then we'll view it from up there.
You can move to the next page?
You're good.
Hey, you have it.
I can speak now?
Yes, you're good. Thank you.
I have these exhibits if anybody wants them.
Well, we'll get them.
It's pretty much the same as that, but it's something you could take with you if you wanted.
Okay.
What we have here is just sort of an overview of what it looks like down there. And as you see, Cates Point Road comes down to a Title Creek, which is somewhat of an issue. That Title Creek is really an access to the Chop Tank River and to an island, which I own there in my name offshore, and also to some to Laird Wisers property, which is another property there. And my concern is, is that if this abandonment is approved, then I would be denied access to my island. Yes, I could go in from the water, but I think that the council should know that I have duck blinds on that island, and I have a duck blind offshore. And the only way I can see that island from the public road is Cates Point Road, if it is abandoned. And it's abandoned up to 4.4 miles from where you enter Cates Point Farm Manor House property, then neither I nor anybody else could see the Chop Tank, could see the island. And that's of very much concern to me and my family. And other reasons I need to look at the island is I like to see if there's anybody trespassing in my blinds or trespassing on the island, hunting there when they really shouldn't be. Also, to assess any damage on the island from weather events or high tides and so forth. And the sheer pleasure of just seeing the island and determining whether I want to go hunting there to see if there's much waterfowl behind the island. Okay, so that's really three reasons why I would like to have access. And another reason really is that sometimes with my family, I like to have a picnic out there, or there's a nice sand spit out there, when the tide's out, it's nice to sit on. So, there are a number of reasons for me, and that's really, members of the council, that's a selfish reason. That's a selfish reason for me. The other reasons that concern me and the Public Works Advisory Board, yes?
No, I'm listening.
The Public Works Advisory Board, the members went down there over the week before, different days the week before our meeting, to really assess the situation, to take a really good, hard look at everything before our discussion and deliberations in the Public Works Advisory Board. And as you all know, that they rejected it, the resolution, and provided reasons, you know, Corey probably provided them to you as to why we.
They have your, the letter, yes.
Why we did that and so forth. I mean, we did try to be very objective about it. And I think some other things that I'm sure the board is probably aware of, but I've lived down here for good well. This is a historical road, and at one time, it was dirt, a dirt road. And the county paid to upgrade it to blacktop, and fairly more recently, put a new covert in at the bottom, which is state-of-the-art material, I guess, sort of a composite, so that it's not going to run away. So, the county's put some real money into there. And what, if we can go to the next slide, please? You can see, again, where the Title Creek goes down, access to the Chop Tank. And I might wanted to add to everybody that there are two public road accesses to the Chop Tank River between Dover Bridge and Cambridge. That's one of them. The other one is at Windy Hill. Those two. And so, in our area, you know, I live in a big farm, and have a number of other landowners here, that there's no access, visual access or water access to the Chop Tank River, except these two places. And I think that if anybody, you know, wants to question me on that, that's fine. It's maybe some places that I haven't gotten into, but that's why Cates Point Road, I think, is very important to many people, and I'm saying many people. People that like to hike down there, people like to bicycle down there, people like to take a nice drive to that pastoral setting and see the river from the road, from that point there. And other organizations which have events, when I say events, walkathons, to support nonprofits like breast cancer, the hospice. The hospice folks were just recognized here recently, to have those kind of events on the road, and the public that lives around there to actually walk down the road with their dog or whatever and so forth, and really not cause any problem. And they've been doing this for, I would say, many decades, and now it's been proposed that it be taken away. And I think that's, I don't think that's right.
Ed, I'm going to go ahead and stop you here. We certainly appreciate your letter, and we appreciate the board's recommendation to council not to support. But we do have, I believe, members here to speak on the Resolution 296, as well as some callers on hold. So, we're going to go ahead and move through the public hearing portion at this time.
Could I ask Mr. Clark a question while he's here?
Pardon?
Yes. And why you're both here. So, looking at the memo that you sent to us, I don't see a reason from the Public Works Advisory Board.
Why we've been involved in it?
I think the Public Works Advisory Board was, I think, one of the reasons they were trying, I think the reason they were suggesting that the council not adopt Resolution 296 was primarily, I guess, because of the water access and the vista that was available from the road.
But the water access is only accessible through private property. Is that, if you park there, are you parking on private property?
If you're parking there, you're parking actually on the shoulder of the road.
And you can launch the boat right over the culvert there?
How much right of way do we own? Or is, yeah, would be public.
I think what you probably see there is basically from, let's say, the shoulders to the shoulders, probably about the right of way that we have there. More than likely, it's a prescriptive easement, but we'd have to verify that.
I think it's about 35 feet.
Yes, I would think that we would need to know if there's public parking in order for it to be public access.
You could park on the shoulder of the road there, over that.
Legally?
Like I said, there's, from our standpoint, there's no, there's no, other than the shoulders, there's no place to park, other than the shoulders.
Down at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Hey, ma'am, sir, hold on, hold on, we'll get to you.
Well, that's a good question. So, the turnaround, but that's a turnaround on, is that a county easement as well, or is that private property, the turnaround?
We go right to the property, just to that property.
The turnaround is right before you go between the pillars up to his, up to the manor house.
And if somebody's parked in the turnaround, then an ambulance.
That's where everybody turns around. The snowplows turn around, the road department turns around, and that's a good question, Mr. DeVio. That's a good question. I think there's a lot of questions like that in our county. But there is that an easement that's given to the county? Or is it, I don't know. I don't, Ray, I don't really know.
Because, has anybody else given permission on Jamaica Point to go to the island?
What did he say?
Anybody given, I guess, for Jamaica Point to do that, to go to the island?
Anybody would?
Can you go to the island from Jamaica Point?
Well, by water. You can go to the island via water, but not public road access. That's the only public road access. You have to have a boat.
Okay, so why don't we hear from the rest of the public and know there's other members here if you want. You can step back, Ed. Thank you very much for your comments and for your slides.
But I provided the picture so you guys could see it. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to go down there just to see what it looks like, and that's why I want to make sure you see it. And I think that's why the Public Works Board went down to look at it.
Yes, sir.
So. Am I done, Mr. Pack?
Yes, you're done. Thank you. You're done.
I'm sorry, I have a difficulty hearing. My years in the Navy, too many years in the Navy.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ready for you, sir.
So, we're going to go ahead and continue with the public hearing on 296. We're going to start with the left side of the room. When you come up, please give us your name. Parker, will they have to press down that button? Okay. When you come up, give us your name. Please hold the button down through your comments. If you're speaking for yourself, we'll give you three minutes. If you're speaking for a group, let us know what group you're speaking for. We'll give you five minutes, and Mr. Callahan has the timer. So, everyone's okay with the ground rules? We're going to start the public hearing on my left on Resolution 296. First row?
Yes, Mr. President.
On my left, hold on, sir, hold on. Anybody on the first row?
Yeah.
Okay, well, sir, if you want to come up and speak, come up, give us your name, press the button down and be heard.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I'll try to speak through this thing. My name is Paul Spitzer. I have a doctorate in ecology from Cornell University. I'm a 25-year resident of Windy Hill in Trap, along with my wife Christine, so I can affirm the absolutely limited amount of access to the Chop Tank down there, visual and physical. I speak as someone who is a hiker, a naturalist, a birdwatcher, and not a big private property owner. A quarter of an acre we have. And the nature of Trap is that there is very, very little public-owned land down there. And therefore, we are very often roadside ecologists, birdwatchers, and hikers. This is what our option is, and the places we really love are a cul-de-sac like Cates Point Road, which is so rich in nature and cuts right across that marsh and is so lightly traveled that it's a safe place to walk or bicycle or be a naturalist. So, by doing this, you're taking this road away from us. And I must say, the last hearing, I viewed the thing, October 10th, Lawyer Showalter misrepresented the situation. It's not just the private driveway of Herr Friedrich. It's a public road that's available to all of us. And for us, that's our gold. Herr Friedrich and his family have a great deal of gold. We don't. And I would say, in the mother tongue of his family, which is also my own, my father's mother tongue, es ist gar nicht richtig. This is not at all correct. And I would go on to say that we have larger issues of control of private property in the town of Trap in particular. We have a situation, I'm sure you gentlemen know about it, over there at Trap East, where we have an immediate proximity to the rowland, a beautiful legacy old-growth forest, which is in the process of being cut down by an owner, a 92-year-old man named Artie Foster, who has never seen this legacy old-growth forest, which should be a county and town forest. This is being done by Alan Johnson. He's the guy who's cutting it down. The really good part of it remains intact. But again, this is private property. Several of us have gone to Artie Foster, and we've implored him to give us an easement, to sell us that 50-acre piece of forest so that it could be Trap Legacy. It's a vestige of the great old legendary Trap Forest. No luck on that. The answer is, it's private property. So, when you do this, often there's no turning back. And if there was any chance to get that forest saved, I want to say this while I'm here, that's something I would love to show you, gentlemen, that forest. I can only show you one edge of it because Lawyer Showalter has a restriction, an order of restriction on me, so I cannot go on the property. But I do have access through a slice that is right next to the forest. Okay.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else on my left side, second row there on Resolution 296?
Hey, sir, can you please sit down?
Hey, sir, can you please sit down?
No, no, sir, you have a seat.
I do not want you to be doing that in, in public. Thank you. If you do that again, you're gonna be out. Not you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Linda Wise, and I am here tonight to speak for my husband Laird and myself in opposition to Resolution 296. My husband is the owner of twenty-two-plus acres on Cates Point Road designated as Map Fifty-Nine, Parcel Sixty-Eight, in the Talbot County tax maps. Our property is adjacent to the land owned by Cates Point Farm LLC, making us particularly vulnerable to the ramifications and unintended consequences of this resolution if approved. Our property, known as Raccoon Creek, has been in my husband's family for over fifty years. During this time, the adjacent property has had many owners, and only now is there a claim need to make Cates Point Road private. That's fifty years in comparison to just a few. According to the Talbot County Sheriff's Office and the Maryland Department of Environment, when last we checked, there have been no reports of trespass, vandalism, or the like along Cates Point Road. I simply fail to see why the landowner can't put a gate attached to the existing gatepost to his residence and install security if he deems it necessary without impacting us or the general public. Now, in May 2020, my husband received a declaration in which the owner of Cates Point Farm LLC, through Ryan Showalter Esquire, sought closure of the entire Cates Point Road, beginning at the intersection of Clarksworth and extending the approximate two and a half miles to the end of the road. Because our property is adjacent to the land owned by Cates Point Farm, we were asked in a twelve-page declaration to agree to limits on how we would use and access our own property. The intent, as clearly stated, was to agree that the roadway would be, and I quote, "protected from the public," unquote. We would be required to use a code or combination every time we wanted to access our own property. In addition, clearly stated, is the fact that a second gate was planned and could be installed beyond our property. We responded that we were not interested, and now here we are this evening. You received a letter dated October twenty-eighth from our attorney, Willard Parker Esquire, addressing our concerns. Resolution 296 requests the abandonment of a point-four-mile section of Cates Point Road and the conveyance of the bed of such roadway to Cates Point Farm. This distance is the approximate distance from our property to the end of Cates Point Road. We're concerned with the impact on our property. For example, if the council deems it to be in the public's best interest to close Cates Point Road, why can't the turnaround easement and gate be located a hundred feet from the entrance to our property, thus assuring no impact? We have attempted, and I would say very hard, to gain clarity about the exact location of the proposed roundabout and gate. The aerial photograph provided with Resolution Number Two-Nine-Six is neither clear nor specific enough.
Could you, could you?
My husband and I are-
I'm dedicating my time.
He's dedicating his time to me.
Okay.
So I wanna point out that the aerial photograph and the drawing is not clear, and the gate does not match what we were told, that the gate will be installed at the point of abandonment, which is approximately sixty-five feet beyond the eastern corner of my access easement. In fact, the roundabout easement provides unauthorized access to our property, which we find unacceptable, and circumvents the gate we have on the front of our road by allowing access to the side of our property. This is certainly a case where the devil's in the details. As stated, our concerns regarding our property would be addressed if the easement and gate were located at least a hundred feet from the entrance to our property. But they are not. They are located as close as they possibly can be to our property. Now, should the council approve Resolution 296, we respectfully request the following: One, that the resolution be amended to require that we have the right to review and approve the survey and location of the roundabout and gate in order to allay our concerns regarding any adverse impact on our property. Two, assurances that any drainage easement or alteration in drainage will not increase the flow of storm or surface waters upon the entrance road into our property. And three, assurance that the county will continue ownership and maintenance of the unabandoned portion of Cates Point Road in perpetuity. Do I have time? Cates Point Road was described to you on October thirteenth as a dead-end road. What wasn't described to you is that at the end of Cates Point Road is a point where direct public access exists to the Chop Tank River, which is only one of two access points directly to the Chop Tank from Talbot County. This is a natural resource that many people in our county have enjoyed for generations. Making the road private will deny this important point of access to the waters of the Chop Tank River to the non-waterfront owners and residents of Talbot County. In addition, taking this access away from kayakers and canoeers, as you've heard tonight, would be in direct conflict with one of the goals of the Talbot County Comprehensive Plan, which is to maintain the county's high quality of life by improving, not reducing, access to our beautiful waterways. I have attached to my written comments an email from Tom Horton, the environmental newspaper reporter for the Bonhamore Sun from nineteen seventy-four to two thousand sixteen. He's the author of several books on the Chesapeake Bay. Tom is currently a professor at Salisbury. In his email, Tom points out that there is a need for more, not fewer, public access points to our waterways. I wanna conclude by saying-
Why don't you finish up? Yeah, you go ahead.
Closing Cates Point Road to the point proposed by Resolution Number Two-Nine-Six will reduce public access to the beautiful Chop Tank River, only to benefit one individual. That individual is the owner of Cates Point Farm LLC. I urge you to vote no to Resolution Two-Nine-Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Wise. We appreciate your comments. We do have your, your letter. Appreciate it. Continuing on now, I want to stand on this side of the room. Sarah, you wanna come up and give us your name?
Do I have to touch anything?
Yeah, you gotta hold that button down on fourth. Yeah, thank you.
My name is Noah Matten. I'm a resident of the town of Easton in Talbot County. I am here as an avid outdoorsman and a naturalist. I think that opposition of this bill is necessary in the fact that it will diminish the access to the Chop Tank. And that area of the Chop Tank, as everybody else has testified, has very little access. I also believe my background is in development, and I've had similar situations in urban areas where I've had to limit access to a development. And in the process, usually what happens is the governmental agency will require us to purchase or provide access to, through a different means, which could potentially be a compromise here if, you know, so, could be, maybe the bill could be adapted to find someone else that would either, maybe the owner of, of the land would put up the money to essentially not purchase, but have the rights of this road, and that money be used to build an access point somewhere else in the general vicinity. So that's my two cents, and that's, I won't take up my five minutes. So thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming out, Noah. We appreciate it, man. Okay, I'm gonna move on to the right side of the room now. Second row, anyone there? Third row, we have staff. Mr. Showalter, you care to come up? You've been referred to several times this evening, so give you a chance to rebut, refute, or comment.
For the record, Ryan Showalter, appearing on behalf of Cates Point Farm LLC, which is the owner of the property on both sides of this segment of the road. Before I address the bill, one thing I just wanna make sure I, I respond to and don't leave it unaddressed. There was a suggestion that Lawyer Showalter has some type of restraining order against Mr. Spitzer. I don't know what that is, but it is categorically untrue, and I just wanna make sure that it's clear for the record that there is no restriction that I have against Mr. Spitzer or anyone else in the public. But to the matter at hand, the, this request is presented to you by my client, who owns both sides of the road for the length that was proposed for abandonment. This property is a property that does suffer from poaching, trespass, and waste disposal problems. Just this past weekend, two deer carcasses were dumped overnight on the farm. There are often trespass and poaching issues with rifle shots, you know, at night, people who are spotlighting and shooting. There's no point in calling the Talbot County Sheriff's or Department of Natural Resources because people are gone before there's a response. This road serves only my client's property beyond this point. There is no public right to park. There's no public access to the river. I understand the point that there's a view from the public road across the marsh, but there's no public landing at this location. There's no parking area at this location. The, the travel surface that exists, the paved road, if you will, in the vicinity of the culvert, where tidal waters are close to the, the road, the asphalt surface is approximately fifteen feet in width. If you, if you look at the photos I provided you, there is a, a rough, I wouldn't quite call it a shoulder, but there's some additional aggregate on each side in the, the area of the culvert, and it's, it's sloping off on both sides. If you measure from one side to the other, it's approximately twenty-six feet wide. The county road standards for your minor public roads, which is the, the least significant, the smallest county road, requires a minimum road width of thirty-two feet. So if you include all of the aggregate from the edge of the marsh to the edge of the marsh, the road is approximately twenty-six feet wide, your road standard calls for a travel surface of thirty-two feet. The paved travel surface of that road is fifteen feet in width. And the, the turnaround area is essentially a glorified area of gravel. There, there's no easement, there's no right to park, and if people park in the turnaround area, there's no place to turn around. So I understand that the public can travel the road and can at least look at the marsh from the road, but there is not a point of, of public access there, and I wanna make sure that the record is, is clear on that from a property rights perspective. The, I understand Mr. Schlichter's desire to, to see his island, but his right of access, or his, his method of access is not any different here than it is from his house. He has to use a boat to get to the island from his house, which is south of this property. The only way he can access the island from this point would be a boat also, other than perhaps visual access. My clients would be happy to work with Mr. Schlichter and provide whoever the record owner of that island is with, with an easement to, to view the island, if this is something that the county determines appropriate to close. But there's no, there's no way to walk from Cates Point Road to the island without, you know, swimming, being in a boat. And, and of course, the, the initial impetus of the request was a focus on safety and security, but the county's facing probably unprecedented budgetary challenges and constraints. And this road provides little utility to the public, in, in my opinion. I don't disagree that the public should have more water access, but, but there should be actual access. I am a big advocate for the county finding other locations, expanding the parking you have at your landings, and finding locations where there's real access. But, but make it in a point where the public can actually park and get to and use the water. This road, if it's abandoned, the county roads department would be released with the responsibility to maintain four tenths of a mile of this road. And, and the culvert, if you look at one of the images I provided you with, you can see a section just off the travel surface of the road where the, the, the aggregate on the side over top of the culvert is, is sinking. You know, I, I don't know whether that culvert will require maintenance in a year or five years or fifteen years, but, but all of the cost of that culvert replacement or maintenance would be borne by the county taxpayers if it remains within the county's ownership. If it's abandoned, that would be borne solely by the property who receive access over this With respect to the Wise family's concerns, it is true that we reached out to them earlier this year and proposed the possibility of closing the, the road, or requesting closure of the road closer to Clarksworth Road than their access point. The, the Wise property, it was indicated on Mr. Schlichter's parcel. It's a rectangular waterfront parcel. It is landlocked, and it has an easement across Cates Point Farm's property to Cates Point Road. And, and we did initially propose to request abandonment of the road, not at the intersection of Clarksworth, but at the point where Cates Point Farm owned both sides of the road. We provided them with a draft private road declaration to, to show how we would have an easement, provide a gate for security for, for all of the ownership there, and make sure they had access. They declined to participate, which is absolutely fine. And, and so we moved the point of proposed abandonment to a point that is beyond their point of access. And I provided their attorney with the, the black-and-white exhibit that you have. That, that depicts on the left-hand side their eighteen-foot-wide right of way in the point where it comes into Cates Point Road, and then shows a proposed gravel turnaround area that was designed with feedback from Mike Murtaugh, the assistant county engineer. The gate that's proposed is approximately sixty-five feet beyond the edge of their easement. If, if the Wise family or the county wanted the gate to be a hundred feet from, from the limit of their easement, that's absolutely acceptable. The, the reason that the gate and the turnaround were proposed at this location is it's a point where there are trees or forests on both sides of the road. So if the, the purpose is to provide additional security and reduce trespass, putting a gate where you have trees and forests on both sides is a lot easier than putting a gate out in the middle of the field where people could drive around the gate. There's no, no concern addressing their, their drainage concerns. That certainly can be confirmed through design, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Showalter? Okay.
So again, the, the parking that's down there is illegal parking. Is that correct?
If, if parking occurs, it's, it's occurring in a small gravel area that's, that's required for turnaround of vehicles. There is, there is no public easement or no right of parking down there.
Okay. Could I just ask of the room to raise your hand if you knew that we just purchased or took over the Bill Burton Park down in Trap on the Chop Tank River from Natural Resources Police? Does anybody know that, other than Cassandra? So we, we are looking at adding more, more park space on the Chop Tank River. It's been brought up a couple times, and I, and the emails that I received today, it seemed like nobody knew that, so I just wanna make sure that we got that out there.
Let me clarify, the county has not retained that property. We are working with, on, by an MOU with DNR as far as the use of the property and how it should be used in the future. We have not retained ownership of the property. I have four callers, okay. Any more questions, Mr. Showalter, before we move on? If not, we do have four other callers on hold for the public hearing. Go ahead.
Mr. Showalter, your, your exhibit shows that the county's right of way is, is a thirty-foot-wide right of way? right-of-way?
So, there's no platted or deeded right-of-way, Mr. Lesher? The general convention is that the county controls from back of ditch to back of ditch, and so, that's the approximate dimensions of what's out there. There's, to my knowledge, and based on our title research, we've not been able to uncover any deeded or platted right-of-way that defines a width. What the 30-foot width specified is what we would donate to the county. So, what's proposed would be a plat. If this goes forward, the county would require a line-revision plat, which would essentially establish a platted and deeded right-of-way from the point of abandonment northwest for the length of Kate's Point ownership, so that the county would have an established easement for the entire length of the road from the gate back towards Clark's Wharf, and then from the gate east, what public right-of-way exists would be described by meets and bounds. It would be a quick claim deed to extinguish whatever prescriptive right exists, and then the planning staff requires that that area be designated as a private road with a recorded road maintenance agreement, to ensure that the county doesn't have obligations for its maintenance in the future.
Okay. We do have, thank you, Mr. Showalter. We do have four callers on hold, so I'll turn to Mr. Durham.
We have Jamie Dingler, who has indicated that they wanted to speak quite a while ago. Go ahead and unmute. Go ahead and speak.
So, I did want to speak on this issue. I was just waiting for the public comment section at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
That's all.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you all for your comments on Resolution 296. We heard from the Public Works Advisory Board. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this time, since there's no callers on the line to be heard from. This matter can be taken up tonight for final vote.
I ask that we do not take this up for vote, as Mrs. Price is not here, and she requested that we wait.
And if there's any other member who thinks likewise, we can certainly hear from them, but...
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So, we'll set it off to a side until our next meeting to consider Resolution 296. Okay, next public hearing we have is on, let me turn my page here, Bill 1465. Secretary, would you please read the title of the bill?
Bill number 1465, a bill to adopt the Cordova Village Master Plan, December 2019, in accordance with the 2016 Talbot County Comprehensive Plan and the provisions of Local Government Article Section 10-324 and Land Use Article Section 1-405 et cetera, annotated code of Maryland.
Thank you very much, Secretary. Ms. Verderi, Mr. Salinas, good to see you both. We'll hear from you.
Thank you, council members, and good evening. I don't have anything else to add from the last meeting when we introduced the draft Cordova Village Master Plan. I just wanted to remind the council that in August of this year, the Planning Commission did review the draft master plan and voted unanimously to recommend council adoption of the plan, and that it meets the goals of the comprehensive plan, but they also wanted to stress that the master plan itself is a good basis for continued discussion and implementation between staff and the community on any of the components that are included in the master plan, should the council so wish to pursue one or more of them. But beyond that, I just stand for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Salinas, on the bill? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we have no one in the room, so I'm gonna turn to the phone lines.
Okay, we do have one person indicating that they wish to speak. This is a dial-in caller. Caller, go ahead.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, council. This is Zach Smith, on behalf of Nagel Farm Service, owner and operator of the grain storage facility located in Cordova. And I just wanted to comment on the plan. As I communicated previously to the council, my client has concerns of the potential adverse impact, its property, from the bicycle trail that's discussed in the plan. My client certainly doesn't object to such trails generally, but because the subject rail line literally runs through an area that is regularly used to maneuver and stage grain trucks, any trail built along that former rail line will consequently cause disruption to Nagel's operation. And even if the trail was shifted towards Cordova Road, you know, the proximity of such a facility raises liability concerns, particularly during this time of year when the facility is very busy receiving grain from area farmers, which involves lots of large trucks entering and exiting, and generally moving about the site. And there's lots of equipment that could certainly be dangerous if passengers by venture onto the property. And so, for these reasons, my client has concerns and generally opposes the concept of the trail that's identified in the plan. And we certainly understand that the plan doesn't say the trail should be built or should not be built, but simply identifies it as a possibility and references the potential for future discussions with the state. And if and when the state and/or the county begin to look at that closer, you know, I'm sure there'll be opportunity for public review and comment, and we'll certainly monitor and be ready to participate. But, and so, while the actual design and construction of any trail is not being planned at this time, you know, because the proposed Cordova Master Plan identifies the trail as a possibility, my client requests that a statement be added to the plan confirming that any future trail should not adversely impact adjacent agricultural or commercial uses. And as I recommended, this could be accomplished by adding the following sentence to Section 2 on page 54, just stating that if a trail is ever built in this area, such facility shall be designed in a manner that will not adversely affect farming operations or adjacent businesses such as Nagel Farm Service. And so, I provided that language to the staff. And if that could be added, I think this text would give my client some assurance and comfort that a future trail will not harm its business. So, that's our only request. Otherwise, we appreciate the effort from the staff and the county and the planning efforts, so thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Appreciate your calling in. Any additional callers?
That's the only caller.
Okay. And just to make sure, is there anyone in the room to speak on the bill? Okay, no. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Regarding that language that Mr. Smith alluded to, Mr. Salinas, I believe you've received a copy of that language. I know we had some very brief discussion about that a couple of days ago, whether or not there was something that we could go ahead and incorporate into the plan, just to give those owners a bit more comfort. We know that the plan is conceptually, it's not anything that's put into stone, as far as put into motion, it's being developed or created today. It just gives you a vision forward as to how the town could be, the village could be developed. But, you know, this is not the first time I've heard this regarding a trail through that area. And Ms. Verderi, you've probably heard it many more times than I have, where the farmers in the area and the business owners are concerned about safety. It's not so much that they are against rails or roust-a-trails, but about the safety of having that trail cross over an area that's being used for an industrial or agriculture use, either or. And I would say that there is some concern that I share with them about that as well. But that being said, Mr. Salinas, anything from you on that language, or any comments you shared?
Sure, President PAC, and the concerns that Mr. Smith just stated regarding Mr. Nagel's concerns, his client's concerns, that is not an uncommon issue in roust-a-trails all over the United States, and so, we certainly understand where he's coming from. I think Mr. Smith did share with us his recommended sentence to be added on page 54, recommendation number two, and if anything, staff has no objection to that language. If anything, it strengthens what the language already says in the current draft, which is some citizens were expressed, expressed concerns about issues such as, which would include the operations of existing businesses such as Nagel Farm Service. So, you know, if anything, that language would just add to that, so staff would have no objection to that addition.
Ms. Verderi, anything from you on that language that you would care to share?
No, we agree. We acknowledge their concerns, and we appreciate them reaching out. It would be language that's added to the general master plan, and specifically under the land use goals and policies, that language is also noted. So, as Miguel stated, this would support those goals that are already noted in the plan.
Okay. Chair will look to council for any instruction of staff to look at the language, inserting the language, so I'll open it up for discussion at this time.
Just procedurally, do we, is this done simply by staff at the council level? Does this need to go back to the Planning Commission to have these minor changes made? Or, how do we, what is the procedural roadmap for it?
By direction of council to include the language. So, I'm just opening up for discussion. If that's what we want to do, then we would directly proceed that way.
I would certainly support the addition of that language.
Okay. Any other comment?
I would as well. So, this doesn't die until December 17th, and again, Mrs. Price has asked that we don't vote on it tonight. Is there any reason we couldn't leave the public comment open until the next meeting and come back with it, with that wording in there at that time?
No, there's, that's perfectly acceptable, keeping in mind the critical action date on the legislation, but yeah, definitely.
It seems like word got out today that today was a vote. I received a ton of emails, and I know from 2:00 on, I haven't read a single one of them yet, so I would like a little bit more time to go through the emails and respect Mrs. Price's wishes of holding off on the vote until she's here.
I support that as well.
Ms. Callahan, any comment for your own language?
That's fair enough. There's one thing I would like to sort of understand with Mary Carey and Miguel.
So, in the future, so we've always, me and President PAC met with DNR Secretary and discussed with her the trail that goes all the way up. How far up did it go, Cory? Do you remember? It was a 30-mile trail. So, I'm just, I would just see her thinking, do we need to put language in there that says that, so if the state is going to be helping us with this trail, there's gotta be, you know, a plan, there's gotta be a study, there's gotta be many things. For instance, we gotta get over 404 somehow, some way. So, not only is the Nagel Farm, you know, a safety issue, there's several, there's several roads that you've gotta get past. So, I'm just sort of thinking out loud, is there something that we should put in there that, I'm assuming council would have to, down the road, in future councils, would have to agree and pass what the state and us are gonna do? So, that would be a whole nother issue with open to the public on what we're gonna do with this trail. So, is that, am I headed in the right direction, or just a lot of moving parts with this?
Yes. Councilmember Callahan, that's a really good question. I do think insertion of language like that would be a little premature in this plan, only because this plan doesn't go that far yet. It just notes, really, that, it notes that the county is partnering with the National Park Service and the state to do a feasibility study to look at whether that roust-a-trails is feasible, and what alternative options exist, and what barriers exist to implementation. So, I think the next step, whenever that feasibility study is done, is that the council is gonna hear that feasibility study separate from this plan. And the council will have to make that decision about whether or not they want to further investigate any sort of implementation of all or sections of that roust-a-trails. And so, in my view, I think it would, they're two separate things. What you're asking about, I think, may, some answers may be provided in that feasibility study, some may not, and then the council will have to decide what direction to go next.
But that gives Mr. Nagel the comfort level that we would be doing those steps.
That's correct. That feasibility study will, because now you'll have a lot more information in front of you to help you make next decisions, and should you want to explore it further, I'm sure there's gonna be community engagement in that process if the council were to decide to pursue anything. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
And just for clarification, the meeting that Mr. Callahan alluded to was over a year ago with DNR Secretary Hattaway-Rickio and members of the park staff. And it's, again, it's conceptually done to see if there is a way to extend the trail from Easton heading up north into Caroline County. Nothing is being done by the county, nothing. I don't want anyone to start writing me emails or ringing my phone about us taking land to lay a trail. Nothing is being done. It was just a conversation conceptionally about if this could be done, but as you stated out, and as Mr. Smith stated out, any rail, any desire to move forward on a rail extension from Easton would involve much community conversation, much community conversation.
And, President PAC, I wanted to just add one more thing. The reason why it's in here in the first place is because it was a topic that did come up in the open houses, I should say, in the breakout tables sessions that we did as part of the community meetings over at the fire hall in Cordova. And so, I think the master plan notes, I mean, there were some who were in favor, and some who had concerns about it, but it did come out as a topic, and so, it's reflected in the plan, and the way it's worded is reflected on what we heard from the community members.
Okay. So, and I agree, they're mutually exclusive conversation. What we're asking staff to do, if I understand from Mr. Lesher's motion, is to go ahead and work with Mr. Smith on the language that would give Mr. Nagel and those property owners a bit more comfort, so that if, if, and big I, big F, if any future rail were to come through that Cordova Village, it would not impact their business due to safety. That's a big I, F. So, do we have any objections to that direction for staff? So, we go ahead and get that worked on, and present us back with that. We're not gonna be taking any action on this tonight. We'll hear back from you on our next meeting. Okay.
So, as council, Mr. Clark does have a family obligation that we are made for, and I did tell him we would try to get him out of here, so if he can move on, that'd be great.
Well, let me, where do we need to go with Mr. Clark? Thank you very much, Dave, Miguel.
Pretty much, law and law and service.
Okay, but let's bring him up.
Sorry about that.
293, right?
Yeah, 293.
Well, let's go ahead and do 293. These are eligible for vote tonight.
Oh, sorry.
And, Senator, when you're ready, just read the title for...
293, just to give the council, the council heads up, the Planning Commission, I believe, voted 4-0 to recommend, or the council, I guess, adopt Resolution 293. It also found it consistent with the comp plan. The Public Works Advisory Board...
Before you run too far afield, and I know you gotta get out, but you need to read it for the record, and then we'll get you...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
293, Madam Secretary.
Resolution number 293, resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Border and Store Plan to reclassify and remap residential real property located on Ferry Bridge Road, Easton, Maryland 21601, describe as tax map 24, parcels 69, 70, and 191, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status.
Okay, and going back to you, the comprehensive plan voted 402.
Yeah, and then at the same time, the Public Works Advisory Board passed a motion recommending the county council adopt Resolution 293 via a 4-1 vote. Plus, my son's girlfriend is now his fiancee, so...
So, it's not gonna happen?
No, no, it is.
Oh, okay.
No, no. She said yes. She said yes, so that's, so I'm just missing the drinks now.
Let's go ahead, and if there's a... Need to move the second. Yeah, this can be voted, this has to go to a second reader, does it?
Yeah.
Record valid second time, so it's eligible for vote. So any questions of Mr. Clark on resolution 293? It has been approved by both the comprehensive, for both the Public Works Advisory Board and the planning commission as being consistent with the comprehensive plan. Any question or comment on him, of him? Hearing on this air, the chair will entertain a motion to move 293 to vote tonight, moved by Ms. Callahan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vilio. Any objection? Madam Secretary, please call a roll. We're moving it to vote tonight.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
293 now before council for final vote. Madam Secretary, if there's no more comment or question, please call your vote on 293.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
We have Ms. Price's vote on that, Mr. Cooper Smith?
We do. One sec.
Okay.
Ms. Price votes aye.
Okay, 293 passes to 94.
Resolution number 294, resolution to amend the Talbot County comprehensive water and sewer plan to approve a capital project for the improvements associated with Talbot County Resolution Number 235.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, I hear from you.
On November 4th, the Public Works Advisory Board basically met and passed a motion via 5-0 vote recommending the county council adopt resolution 294. At the same time, the planning commission also found that the 294 was consistent with the comp plan via a 5 to 0 vote.
Thank you very much. Any question, Mr. Clark, on 294? So we heard from both our planning commission and our Public Works Advisory Board both approving adoption of 294. Chair will entertain a motion to move this vote tonight, moved by Ms. Callahan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Vilio. Any comments or question? Hearing on, Madam Secretary, on the matter of moving to vote tonight, would you please call your roll?
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
294 is now before council for final vote. If there's no more comment or question, Madam Secretary, please call your roll.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pach, Ms. Verderi has pointed out, I believe, is this the one that requires a minor amendment?
Oh, yeah, Section 15 be deleted from the resolution I bone in.
Could you explain that to council a little bit?
Sure thing. And I guess in the resolution, there's a Section 15. In that Section 15, it basically has, it was a remnants from a previous resolution. It basically needs to be deleted from Resolution 294.
Is there, is there a page number, Mr.? Page seven?
So I can read this into the record. It's, it's not very long, just so it's clear what's being removed.
Oh, it says Section 15.
Right.
So that needs to come out. Okay, yeah, Mr. Cooper Smith, could you read that for the public?
So the proposal from the planning commission is that this Section 15 be removed from this resolution because it's not relevant. And that section reads, "The sewer connections and wastewater capacity approved pursuant to this resolution are expressly conditioned upon and subject to approval of the major revision plat by the Talbot County Department of Planning and Zoning and all other reviewing agencies which approval results in no more than five residential buildable lots on the property." So I believe that when, that when you had prepared the resolution, it had been taken from the template. That sounds like the McMiles.
It was.
Yeah. So that's just surplus language that was caught using that template. It's not, there is no major revision plat for five lots associated with this particular effort in this resolution.
Anyone from planning wish to be heard? Are we good with that understanding? Okay, so this was excess language that needs to come out. Planning commission courted and unfortunately was not omitted an hour version before council. Is there any question of what was happening here? That section was additional language left over from a previous.
Mr. Pach, I'll move the amendment of the removal of Section 15.
Second.
On the, I don't know whether you're going to vote on, but I'll go ahead and vote on the removal of Sections 15 from the resolution. It's a motion, second by Mr. Devilio. On that motion, Madam Secretary, to amend by removing Section 15, to amend by removing Section 15. Please call your vote.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
We did have a vote and a second to move this matter to vote tonight, now as amended. Is there any more question or comment on 294 as amended? Hearing on, Madam Secretary, 294 is now before council for final vote, as amended. Please call your roll.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
And Mrs. Price?
I would just note for the record, Ms. Price left the ballot.
Before the amendment.
It was amended, so this wouldn't count, but just for the record, had it not been amended, Ms. Price would have voted aye for 294, just for, just for the record.
Right, and due to the amendment, she cannot cast a vote, I understand. So 4-0. Okay, let's move on to 295.
Resolution number 295, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. Resolution 204, a resolution to add a capital project to upgrade the Talbot County BioSalis facility at 9786 Klondike Road, tax map 18, parcel 57, to add receiving and treatment capability for brown grease equipped with odor control proposed for FY 2014 with funding in the amount of $6 million through Rural Utility Service Program USDA Rural Development.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. Ms. Clark, I hear from you.
On November 4th, the planning commission basically found Resolution 295 consistent with the comp plan. They also voted, I guess, to recommend the council adopt Resolution 295 via a 5 to 0 vote. And again, on November 4th, the Public Works Advisory Board passed a motion recommending the county council adopt Resolution 295 via a 5 to 0 vote.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. So we heard both from our Public Works Advisory Board and our planning commission, 5-0, to adopt Resolution 295. Any questions or comment of Mr. Clark? Okay, the chair will entertain a motion right now to move 295 for, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Chair will entertain a motion to move 295 for vote this evening.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Devilio, second by Mr. Callahan. Any comment or question on the motion? Madam Secretary, on the motion to move 295 to vote tonight, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
295 now before, thank you, Ms. Lusher, I'm sorry. 295 is now before council for final, final vote. Any other comment or question? Hearing on, Madam Secretary, please call your roll on 295.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Ms. Price votes aye.
Okay, thank you very much. 295 passes and we thank Mr. Clark and we wish him well on his travels. Mr. Hollis, I'm sorry, we're going to go back to you. I think we were down, we did 95s already, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. Okay, economic development tourism?
So we're asking for a letter of support for Chesapeake Heritage Area grant for the development and printing of a map and guide for the Frederick Douglass Driving Tours. No county funds are required. And if it's awarded, the work will be completed by Design Minds, which is the same company that created outdoor exhibits at the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe.
Thank you, Ms. I'm going to say Ms. Van Hughes. Ms. Van Hughes, right, I'm looking at you and thinking about Mary Kay, I don't know why, but anyway. We're here for you on this, on this request.
So the Stories of the Chesapeake has a small grant program and you can apply for up to $5,000. We, two years ago, did a frederiedouglassbirthplace.org website and transitioned our driving tours to an online format. Ironically, people have continued to ask for a printed product. So we are pursuing that with a small grant request to the Stories of the Chesapeake. There will be county funds expended. I'm sorry if I miscommunicated that. Mr. Hollis? One of us.
But you have the funding and cover in your.
We do.
No problem. Okay, chair will entertain a motion on the request for, for the grant.
Mr. Pach, I will move, but, but with a note that when it comes to budget time, remember that, that we do help to support the Stories of the Chesapeake Heritage Area through the Tourism Department. And, and this is evidence that that money comes back to us many times over. And this is not the first grant that we've received from them that's in excess of those funds that we contribute to the fund. It's really important to keep that program alive and here is firsthand evidence of that. So I'm moving for the letter of support.
Thank you. Ms. Lusher, is there a second? Madam, Mr. Callahan, any further discussion on the letter of support? On the, for the grant request? Hearing on, Madam Secretary, please call your roll.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. For public comment? Yeah, okay, we're not there yet. I'll come to you.
So, counsel, we just have a few appointments. Commission on the aging, we're requesting the appointment of Christopher Chikoris of Talbot Hospice and Lynda Percheska.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Devilio, second by Mr. Callahan on the appointments. Any comment or question? Hearing on, Madam Secretary, please call your roll.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Economic Development Commission requesting the appointment of Debbie Walsworth with the BSC Group, the reappointment of Walter Chase with the Town Trap, and Jackie Wilson with Providence State Bank.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Devilio, second by Mr. Callahan. Any further comment? Hearing on, Madam Secretary, please call your roll.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Parks and Recreation Advisory Board requesting the reappointment of Jeff Harrison of the Bay Hundred District.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Devilio, second by Mr. Callahan. Any further discussion? Hearing on, Madam Secretary, please call your roll.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Counsel, for your December schedule, December 8th is your first meeting of that month. Normally, the second would be on December 22nd. I am instead asking you to make December 15th the special legislative day and not have a meeting on the 22nd. So I'd ask for a motion to that effect.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'll support that.
I just do a blank.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve, please. Madam, Mr. Devilio, second by Mr. Lusher. Madam Secretary, please call your roll.
Mr. Pach?
Aye.
Mr. Devilio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
And for the council and for the public, county offices will be closed tomorrow, November 11th, in honor of Veterans Day. And finally, counsel, the governor did have a press conference at 5:00 this evening. He did talk at great length about increasing numbers for the COVID pandemic. And in particular, he talked about strongly warning against indoor gatherings of 25 people or more. So in that vein, I'll be seeking consultation from Dr. Wadley, the county health officer, regarding whether the county council meeting should continue in person or whether we should be recommending you move to a virtual format for the foreseeable future. And I will let you know that. I'll come as soon as I get direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollis. We do have some callers online for public comment. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Durham to handle that. Parker?
Okay, we do have one caller indicating they want to speak. This is Jamie Dingler.
Okay.
Please continue.
Jamie, are you there?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay.
So I'm calling in today representing Talbot Interfaith Shelter. We had a lovely meeting with President Pach this morning at our shelter facility at 107 Goldsboro Street. He recommended that we call in today and just give the rest of the council an update on what's going on at Talbot Interfaith Shelter. We have been, since the beginning of the COVID pandemic, anticipating a pretty significant increase in need for our services and that is certainly coming to bear. We've been looking since May for a second shelter facility. We have found one which actually happens to be directly next door to our current shelter facility. And we have entered into a contract to purchase that facility pending the outcome of a special exception permit hearing, which will be next Tuesday, the 17th, at 9:00 a.m. with the Board of Zoning Appeals for the town of Easton. This is actually incredibly fitting that it falls on that date because that happens to be right in the middle of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. So we are, while we are excited to move forward with these plans, we know that it's necessary. You know, obviously, it's bittersweet because we honestly wish that, you know, this wasn't something that we had to do to expand our services. But we are happy that we're fortunate to have the opportunity to help more people, certainly through this crisis and moving forward, who need our help. For those of you who aren't aware of Talbot Interfaith Shelter, we have developed a program that it's more than just a shelter facility. Our program, we call it S4 Shelter Stability Support Success. This program provides a step-by-step path from homelessness to self-sufficiency. So our shelter and soon-to-be hopefully shelters, that is just the first step in our program. Our guests receive case management, educational opportunities. We have a transitional housing program and lots of support from all over the community, lifting our guests up as they move forward back towards independence. I encourage any of you that would like to learn more, we would love to chat with you. We're happy to meet with you either at Easton's Promise or via Zoom, whatever you're comfortable with, and tell you more about our plans for this new facility. Certainly, I can, you know, leave my contact information if anyone wants to reach out and get an update. Thank you all so very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Jamie, for calling in. We appreciate you guys as well down at Talbot Interfaith Shelter and all that you're doing. Parker, anyone else on the call?
The only caller.
That's it? Okay. All right, let's swing over to counsel comment. Mr. Lusher, I'll start with you.
I just want to pass on my, my sincere compliments to the Talbot County Board of Elections for a smooth and uneventful general election in this county. Voting by mail was strongly encouraged and many of those ballots, they took the time to tally them before Election Day, speeding up the effort of getting the results out early. Voting likewise went very smoothly with results released promptly. Until this year, until this year, I had taken all of this for granted, and I think many of us also did. This year, we just, we learned that we can't take this for granted. And so my sincere compliments to the Board of Elections. Well done and thanks to all who've stepped up to work at the polls to make this go so smoothly. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lusher. Ms. Devilio, anything from you?
So I think back to every Veterans Day, I always think about, there was a time when I was sitting at a club with a group of men looking through some pictures of the Battle of the Ball. One of the guys had fallen in it. He was fortunate enough to go over with a little money and some film and really take a lot of pictures of it. And while we're sitting around the table looking at these pictures of kids without shoes on in the worst kind of battle ever, a group of 4H high school students came into the room. And I remember looking at them thinking how incredibly difficult it would have been for that group to be up and moved right into, into a battle like many veterans have done. So I always respect Veterans Day. I believe Mary Kay was, is the only veteran, I believe, in the room. And I'd like to thank you for your service. I respect all of those who do serve. It takes a lot of courage and I greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Callahan?
Yeah, I want to comment on that too. So I really appreciate all the veterans, their safety and everything. We take it granted day to day and they're out there fighting for us. And I can't thank them enough to keep them safe. The other thing I want to do is I want to thank Mr. Devilio, myself, Vicky Wilson, and Richard Marx. Friday, we met with them. We had lunch with them and we had a great conversation of, about diversity and the Talbot boys and things in the future that we are looking at. And, you know, there was one thing that Vicky said that she come away with the last meeting on the, I think it was the 27th. Yeah, I think it was the 27th. And she was a little confused about us not wanting to meet people. So I think, I think it really helped that we sat together, one-on-one, and told her that we're willing to listen and come up with solutions and ideas. And I think, I think we all walked away in a good place. And, you know, I think she felt better. But she was a little mixed up on that last meeting and we told. and we told her what procedures were, and we have a procedure to go by. So it really helped, I think, you know, get one more step of, you know, helping people that are, you know, a little confused on what our procedures are. So I really appreciate Vicki being there and Richard Mark being there, and I think Mrs. Harriet Lowery, she couldn't be there, but I think we're going to be getting together with her soon, and just looking forward to it. So we're making efforts to move forward.
Okay. This past Tuesday, Election Day drifted on into election Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then finally on Saturday. Just want to send my congratulations out to President-elect Biden and Senator Harris on their victory, becoming the forty-sixth president of these United States. We certainly wish them well as the country needs to move forward in this healing process and to move forward as we reconnect with the world and make those alliances back once again. We also want to salute, I want to salute all the veterans. It's very, it's a Navy vet, and I spent a little bit of time in the Navy, but I'll tell you about that during lunch. And we want to always thank them for their service and for their dedication to this country and for what it stands for. Also, Parker, I want to give you a shout-out tonight. I mean, everything, everything went well. I mean, I know we've been having some ups and downs with this technology here, but sound quality, I believe, was right on tonight and didn't have any hiccups. So I know you've been working diligently to get this room set up and so that we can hear the callers, the callers can hear us. And as Mr. Hollis alluded to, we're going to be looking at how we need to move forward from here on out, sitting down with Dr. Wadley and kind of game-planning this. So we may need you even the more as we move forward. And I want to thank you, the Talbot County voters. We were successful, you were successful with ballot question B, C, and D, allowing this council and future councils to expand the property tax just a bit and generate some additional, much-needed revenue as we move forward in addressing the needs of public safety here in Talbot County. So I want to thank the callers, thank the voters for that. There was a big step forward, one that I have been a part of probably since, since coming onto the council, that we've been trying to deal with this, the issue of the revenue cap and how we can meet the needs of you, the citizens, while being restrained by our revenue situation. So thank you for doing that, and hopefully we'll now have a little bit more breathing room to address those concerns.